Anyone take your seats, please? It started. That was good. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would anyone please rise for the invocation? And would Pastor John Anderson with the Bay Presbyterian Church please come forward?
Let's bow for prayer. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we are grateful tonight for the blessings of liberty. We thank you for this, our city council. We ask your blessing on them tonight. We pray that you give them a spirit of wisdom and of courage and of decisiveness. Heavenly Father, tonight, we would pray for our first responders. Thank you for their service to the community. We particularly pray for law enforcement, as it appears as though there's an epidemic of violence. And, God, we just pray that, for these, our sheriff's deputies and the sheriff's department, we pray that you'd bring them safety and success in their jobs. And, God, we pray you'd bring them great satisfaction in their service to their communities. Thank you, God, for the blessings of liberty. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Councilman Slakka, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It is my honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, we're ready for a good one here. Uh, let's see, at this moment, we'll take public comment on any agenda items. That's on an agenda item only, please. Come on forward. And anybody wanting to talk, just go ahead and queue up there, right behind the lovely lady at the microphone.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. First of all, looking at these proclamations, congratulations to all. But my little comment is going to be on the consent agenda, 7A. I'm a member of the Waterways Advisory Committee, and I just want everyone here and watching to know that if you look at your tax bill, you pay to the West Coast Inland Navigation District. I think mine this year was $12.50. And I'll tell you something, folks, we get a big bang for that. We prioritize the requests for grants, and our biggest requests are from Marine Patrol from all over the county. And unfortunately, it's capped at 30%, so we have to draw the line. But every year, I think in most cases, Benita has qualified for just about all they've asked for. So if anyone's upset about this, believe me, you're getting a good bang for the buck. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello.
Hello. Go ahead and pull that microphone down there, so we can all hear what you're saying there. My job is making you as nervous as possible. Go ahead, man, I'm just teasing. Go ahead, have at it, man.
My name is P. Simmons. I want to talk about the skate park.
Good.
I personally do not want to put it out, and I know a lot of people do not want to put it out with a new pickleball court. And, um, and we need more kid stuff in Banana Springs, like a mall, sprinkler park, a water park, a wave park, and Sly the City down Banana Beach Road. And a lot of kids use the skate park, and kids, and a lot of my friends and people I know. And more stuff at the community pool.
Good.
And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Good. Thank you very much. Good job, man. Good job. Thank you very much.
Runs in the family, you know.
It does.
My name's Jake Delaney, and a lot of kids, like, I'm going to talk about skate park, because a lot of the kids, like, like, I go to sports club. It's like, it's right next to the skate park and the rec. And we use the skate park all the time in the summer, like, every single day. And there's, like, 40 kids there in the day. And then, once we leave at four o'clock, a bunch of other kids that, like, are members at the skate park are there, and they're always there, they're there every day, and there's, like, 40 kids there. And they're always there, and then we're all having fun and stuff. And they wanted to close it, and they all don't want to close it, because it's a lot of fun for them. And, yeah.
All right, good. Anything else?
Um, not really. You really said it off.
Oh, good. You get the point. He's reminding you of something. Go ahead. What did he forget?
No. You said it off.
What he said, right? What he said?
Yeah.
All right, good. We got it. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, wish to speak to anything on the agenda, please come forward. Hello.
Hello, Greg DeWitt.
Hello.
District 2. Hard act to follow.
I'm telling you.
Two kids. But I too come to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7A, with the, uh, we call it the Wiesn Grant. The Fire Department has been, um, going for the Wiesn Grant for the last four or five years. We have been recipients of it. I think it's a great thing. I think it's great for the city to be a part of it. We, in the past, have gotten anything from our new boat that we've gotten three years ago. We got a 50-50 grant on it, so we have benefited from it. The citizens of Benita Springs have benefited from it, so I think it's a great thing for the city to be a part of.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yeah, hi, Ron Pure. It's a great day in Benita. You're, uh, you're going to spend some time handing out awards and recognitions to, uh, a lot of people who've shown exceptionalism outside of our city. It's fantastic. On the other note, 7A, uh, the district and the WCIND, West Coast Inland Navigation District. Look, I, I've spent a lot of time in the past 10 years out in the bay, the creek, the river, and, uh, when I read the article in the banner, I was led to believe that there would be additional eyes, uh, sent out, uh, to check out what goes on out in the bay. On the other hand, the agenda, the green sheets, has nothing to that effect. It just talks about maintaining what we've got now, maintaining services that are in place now. We've got other issues out in the bay that need addressing, and WCIND, that West Coast Inland outfit, uh, to which we pay, as do all other people in the Lee County, uh, which amounts to a goodly sum of money. I think rather than spend money on additional coverage by the sheriff's office, uh, they can best use their personnel, by the way, on land, as one person pointed out recently or before me. There's, uh, there's problems brewing in the nation right now with respect to our lease departments. I think that we ought to, uh, instead of do that, allocate the money towards what is outlined. We should be allocating money to dredging. We've had big problems in the bay over the recent years, and it's really gotten to be a terrible situation with some of the channels. One in particular is the switchback leaving Spring Creek and other areas in the bay that are in real bad need, uh, because we're looking at damage on water, uh, that people will experience as a result of running into them. If they haven't been out in a year, they're in for a big surprise. So before you dedicate the funds that you've allocated in the city budget and these particular funds for WCIND, uh, I hope you'll consider, uh, readdressing that expenditure and putting it instead to, uh, to those needs that I've kind of identified. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
I like these guys' idea over here. Oops. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for the invite. Just want to touch on the Wiesn, um, grant. That seems to be a, a major topic here today. I just want to throw out some statistics real quick. My name is Chris Neiston, Lieutenant with the Lee County Sheriff's Office Marine Unit. Wiesn has been around now for about 10 years, um, and Benita Springs and Fort Myers Beach both have given us extra money for extra bodies on the water. From August, from this fiscal year till the end of August, so far, we've done 425 safety inspections, dispatched 80 complaints, 63 manatee warnings, 118 written warnings, 287 verbal warnings, and it accounts for 1,100 hours additional bodies that are on the water in the Imperial River, um, Fish Trap Bay, you know, all that area. I think it's a huge asset to the city and the folks of Benita Springs, especially those who have a, a vast interest in the water. But again, um, and that's, that's, that's in addition to the sheriff's deputies that are already out on the weekends, because it's usually a Friday, Saturday, and also a Monday if it's a holiday.
Good.
The, uh, extra coverage is great.
Good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item. Seeing none, let's go ahead and go on with the proclamations and presentations. And let's see. I think there's a storm brewing here.
Really? Nothing?
All right, this first one, uh, let me get out of the way this gigantic trophy right here that says something about the boys champions, uh, champions, the National President's Cup. Uh, I want to call up everybody, give the hand to the Benita Storm. Get up here. Come up here. Get up here.
Come up here, just make a line up there. Get out there. You, Charles, go sit back down. No, I'm just kidding. Hang on, man. Hey. Hey. Hang on. Hang on. All right, now I'm buried. Let me get over here. Sorry. Let me have a place right here. See, I stood next to him.
All right, uh, this is great. We're really proud of you here at the, how the Benita Springs Storm won this, and, uh, it had been quite the adventure. Uh, whereas for the first time ever, a youth soccer team from Florida captured the top prize in a prestigious national tournament. And whereas in July, the Benita Storm emerged victorious in the under-13 boys division during the 2015 U.S., uh, Youth Soccer National President's Cup Finals in Overland, Kansas. And whereas along the way to winning the national championship, the team dispatched its high-level opponents in a manner, who wrote this? This is awesome. In a manner that could almost accurately be described as ruthless. You guys? Really? And whereas the Benita player, David Gomez, who is, where's David? David Gomez netted two goals for the Storm in the final game to seal the victory from, for the Storm, tallying the second, uh, his second goal in the 15th minute of the perfect cross from teammate, I don't know how you say that.
Arestes.
Arestes Muniz?
Muniz.
Who was named Tournament MVP. And now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, do hereby express our sincere gratitude to the Benita Storm for all their hard work and the dedication in the winning the U.S. Youth Soccer National President's Cup. Everyone, please give them a big hand for all their hard work. Awesome.
Very cool.
Hey, Coach, would you like to say something?
Right. Tell us about it.
I will try. I don't say bad words. If you understand something different, it's not a bad word, it's my accent.
We won't judge it.
No, I, I really appreciate what you guys, you know, doing for us, you know, giving us the opportunity of being here today, and, and, and thank you guys for all the support that you guys have given us by, you know, giving us a place, a place to practice and play, and, and, uh, it's very, it has been very well maintained, and, and hopefully you guys could keep supporting us on that. And, um, I think it's a great experience that, you know, representing with this boy the city of Benita Springs, and hopefully we could keep putting the name, you know, higher and get recognized out there. Not us, it's not the city, so, so we get more people coming and make more money, right?
Keep training these guys for the U.S. Soccer Team. You guys are ready to go to U.S. Soccer Team? Thank you very much. All right, have a seat, man. Thanks. Take us with you. Thank you. And you, you got to leave this trophy if you're the mayor, aren't you? No? No? I don't think so.
Congratulations, guys.
Go ahead. There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations.
Yeah, don't bother.
All right. All right, now we have another Benita Springs champion here. Dolly Scott, could you please come up here, please? And if you, would you like your son to come up with it? Randy, you want to come up here? Come on.
Thank you, God, thank you.
Dolly Scott, of course, the famous Dolly. Come right around here, this way. That's appropriate. You can tell she's a dancer. She's wondering which is the appropriate way to come up.
Hi, Randy. How good to see you.
First of all, I want to know, being such a graceful lady, how you had a son like him?
Oh.
How did that happen? I asked my mother the same thing. I mean, about me.
A great son.
Aw, he is a great son.
And a great partner.
Aw, bless his heart. All right, and Dolly Scott, she was the Triple Crown winner for the 2015 Fred Astaire World Champion Las Vegas, and, uh, everyone, please give her a hand. Very good. And this is in, this certificate of recognition that we proudly present, Dolly Scott, of Dolly's Protos Patch and Edry, the Triple Crown winner of 2015 Fred Astaire World Champion Las Vegas. And this says just so little of how we all love you and feel so good of you. You're such a fixture here in this community, and we're so proud of you, and you get younger all the time, which really irritates me. No end. The mayor gets getting older and older, and you're just younger every day. Uh, thank you so much for everything you do.
I thank you so much. And you know, I have a new name.
You have a new name? What is it?
American Pharaoh.
Triple Crown winner. Whoa.
That's right.
Very nice.
After the awards were over with, and I was totally stunned, totally stunned, because there was about 450 to 500 people there to see me receive my award, and I got a standing ovation, which just started to make me cry. The judge said, "Don't cry, you'll run your mascara." And anyways, I said, "I need to call my son." It was two o'clock here in the morning, so when I called him, he said, "Are you okay, Mom?" I said, "Yes, but I have a new name. Call me American Pharaoh." I went for the Triple Crown.
Nice, nice. Very proud of you. Thank you so much.
I thank you, I thank you, I thank you.
Bless your heart. Thank you so much.
Photo up.
Nope, let's get a photo here. Come back to Dolly.
Photo, photo.
I have to trust me, your finger. Randy, awesome. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Congratulations. You are. Yeah.
Okay, and now we have another certificate of appreciation. Terry Schmidt, will you please come up, please? Come on, Terry.
And this is, uh, certificate is for Terry, an appreciation and recognition for his years of dedicated service as a volunteer on a Historic Preservation Board, 2006 to 2015. Terry, thank you so much for your volunteer service. Terry kind of exemplifies this volunteer service that we see in our community. We're so proud of all our volunteers, especially for you. Thank you so much. Please give Terry a hand. Thank you.
Terry, do you have any words?
Um, it's been a real honor to serve the city of Benita Springs and the community, and, uh, I'd like to thank John Gucciaro. He's made my job real easy over the, for the span of time that I've been there, and as well as Janet Martin, who's done great for our board, communicating between our board and the city council. So I wish a lot of good things for the, for the Preservation Board and the city of Benita Springs. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your service so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now this is for Industry Appreciation Week, whereas industries and businesses within the city of Benita Springs and Lee County are vital to the community's economic development base, and whereas the city of Benita Springs and Lee County's existing industries are the key to a prosperous future. Whereas the expansion of these industry accounts for the majority of new jobs created, and whereas our industry and business community improve the quality of life in the city of Benita Springs by supporting and sponsoring multiple educational, cultural, and recreational programs. And whereas public knowledge and the contributions made by industry is essential to the maintenance of good community-industry relationships. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor of the city of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of September 14th to the 18th, 2015, as Industry Appreciation Week in the city of Benita Springs, and encourage all residents to pay tribute to our businesses for their contributions to the Benita Springs economic well-being by Benita, right? I put that on there myself, just then. Everyone, please, uh, give our Industry Appreciation Week a pause, please. And I've got somebody to come up here. Come on up. Beep Hat. Beep Hat is with the Horizon Council on Industrial Development and Horizon Foundation. Would you like to say a few words, Beep Hat?
Thank you. Uh, we've had such a long and great experience and, and relationship with the city of Benita Springs since its founding. We're very proud to have, uh, Mayor Nelson on our executive committee. We're also extremely proud to have the, uh, Benita Chamber on our, uh, on the Horizon Council, and also support the efforts of the Benita Astero EDC. Uh, for me, it's just, uh, I personally love coming here each year, and next year will be my 20th year, so it's, uh, it's something I've enjoyed for quite some time. So thank you very much for this, and we look forward to seeing all of you at the Industry Appreciation Luncheon to kind of visit with a thousand of our closest friends. Thank you.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Here, we'll take a, hold it up. Thank you, sir. Okay, and now we're going to receive the, uh, Benita Springs Economic Development Council's quarterly report.
Oh, okay, John, thanks.
Nice segue into Industry Appreciation and then this, right? Right? Pretty good? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson and council members. My name's John Kozak. I'm the chairman of the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council. I'm pleased to be able to report that our public-private partnership between the city of Benita Springs and the Benita Springs Economic Development Council is alive and well. We continue to see the results of our clients' hard work producing new jobs and making a real economic impact in our area. So I know your time's valuable, so we're going to turn our attention to the, um, the slides there. And, um, so, uh, so far this year, um, well, we've had 33 new, um, leads that we've developed, confidentiality agreements. There's three in effect as we, as we speak. Uh, the three-year job projections of those clients are 120 jobs. We have some really, uh, really good names, uh, there that, uh, we're work, working with right now and have worked with. Camuto Group, uh, as you all know, and Discovery Daycare Academy, Specialty Coatings, uh, some real, uh, high-paying, stable jobs in our community that, um, you know, we're all really proud of, that the, these companies have produced these types of jobs in our, our community. Uh, since the inception in 2011, we've got 387 jobs produced. So, um, moving on to the, uh, return on investment. So, uh, Benita's $25,000 investment in the EDC has, uh, created an investment return in terms of economic impact of $614 per dollar spent. So that's, um, based on a calculation that, uh, is used throughout the industry called RIMS, that takes into account, um, many factors, direct wages, indirect wage, wage benefits, uh, and then also capital improvements. So you'll see how those three companies, Camuto, Discovery Daycare, and Specialty Coatings each have, uh, committed, um, uh, that, uh, economic impact is over $15 million for just those three companies. Next, we have a testimonial, and, uh, this is my favorite slide, because it's, uh, it's coming from a leader of a, you know, a global company, Camuto Group, uh, who does business in 70 different countries. So, uh, the comments that, uh, Jeffrey Hoald made, the chief financial officer for Camuto, was pretty impressive. So you can see that, uh, you know, the, the staff, uh, and Carl Schwing and Ben Nelson and all the staff at the city of Benita Springs, uh, have gone out of their way to, to impress a company of this size. So that's, uh, uh, pretty special. And then we also have, uh, Wonder Woman sitting right next to me here, Christine. She bears a slight resemblance to the Lynda Carter.
That's going to stick. I'm seeing to that right now. That's going out to everybody.
All right. So, um, economic, economic impact of the city, you can see that, uh, the cumulative impact, uh, since 2011, uh, you'll see all the names there, um, $102 million, it's more than $102 million since 2011, based on those, uh, return on investment numbers. So, next, next slide, uh, our group's all about retention and development. That's, you know, it's really great to be able to bring in, uh, businesses like Camuto and, but, uh, retention and development is real, really where we're specializing, and our focus needs to be on this issue. And, uh, you know, the pool of, um, of, uh, employees that we have in our market, we're just not producing enough skilled workers here in southwest Florida, and the pipeline for those jobs is increasing. And, you know, you can see on the next slide where those, uh, those, uh, those, um, students are coming from that are filling these jobs, so we, we have the, uh, we have the facilities in place, the educational, um, institutions in place to fill these jobs, but we're just not producing them fast enough. Christine, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, um, so Christine Ross, the, um, executive director of the Economic Development Effort, one of the things that you're going to see in this next slide is that we have a very strategic and, um, a fairly wide-ranging, uh, array of tactics that we're using to try to help grow the local talent pool. Um, we've engaged, uh, all the way down into the middle of schools, where we're starting to talk about how they can do more to expose students at a very early age to the opportunities that are out there, because that's really when you can still capture their imagination. I think that's a, a perfect thing for middle schoolers to be doing. They're still somewhat flexible and interested. And, um, all the way up to, uh, the Future Makers Coalition and a new project with Florida Gulf Coast University. It's going to be one of the first of its kind in the United States, and we are, um, doing the pilot project with them. They're expanding their internships to become, uh, four years' worth of internships, and our commitment on this end is to make sure that we line the different businesses up that don't yet understand how to get to interns or what's involved. We're going to line them up to accept interns from lots of the different programs. In particular, the Pages program is focused on the, um, arts, uh, the School of Arts and Sciences, and we're going to help those students with anthropology and theology and social science degrees understand how to get into the world of banking and more mainstreamed programs, so that they can earn high-wage jobs and find gainful employment, because ultimately, after mom and dad pays for four years, you really want your children to be employed. So, um, we've spent a lot of time with the school district. You'll see that continue to evolve. We have people on multiple committees, so that we can try to impact and make sure, um, the business community knows what's going on there, so there's two-way communication. It's hard for the school district to be communicating with, uh, the business community, and so we're trying to get their job projections back into the school district, so they understand where curriculum needs to be evolving. So it's, um, it's a pretty aggressive program, and it's going to continue to evolve over the course of multiple years.
So on, on the legislative side, you know, we're paying attention to legislative issues and the challenges that go along with those, uh, so Christine's hard at work at all times on the, on that, uh, front as well. So, right now, um, we're also, the Southwest Florida Economic Development Alliance is just been formed, uh, and it's beginning to take, take shape, and, um, we've been able to participate with, uh, that alliance. It's a regional alliance, and Christine's been invited to, uh, to join, um, some of the activities that they've, uh, sponsored, and one of those, two of those activities last year were to, uh, attend a site selector conference. Um, the, the alliance, uh, pays for the, the booth there at the, the conference, and, you know, our, uh, EDC, uh, has to, uh, get Christine there and pay for her, her lodging, but that's a great way to leverage our dollars. Um, you know, she's able to, uh, she, she also went to the Medical Device Manufacturing Trade Show, which, in Orlando, so we're, we're able to participate, uh, in those types of activities that normally we wouldn't be able to do, uh, except for the alliance. So, that's... Public relations and communications, um, you know, most of our marketing is, uh, you know, we, we're not out there advertising and a, a lot of public... we're not out there advertising in a lot of publications. Most of it's being done through our website. You know, we've had, we're in the process of redeveloping our website and maybe Christine, you can elaborate on what we're doing on that side.
So, one of the things that the city staff is interested in is what kind of a push rate we have. All of the public relations that we're doing right now is being taken care of by the chamber staff. And one of the things that I want to highlight for you is that 7,900 email recipients is a great number for a four-year-old organization and the 31% open rate means, I mean, that's a huge open rate if you know anything about those statistics. So, a lot of people are opening and reading and paying attention to the information. And these e-newsletter subscribers could be from anywhere because you can opt-in from our website. So, one of the things I always remind you is that people watch your meetings and you never know who's looking at you until about 80% of the way through the site selection process. So, that's a great thing for us to know. When we do these press mentions and push good news out about what's going on in Benita Springs, we're really seeing that that's creating some stickiness on the website. After we'll do one, we'll see folks spending a little more time on the website, so that's helpful. And for us to be able to post articles out on LinkedIn whenever I see good news in the morning, I have a reputation for being up really early, which means I'm going to fall asleep in about five minutes if we don't finish this report. But I push news things out to our LinkedIn accounts so that people all over again are getting those. What you're going to see coming up and the next phase of this is, as we said, the third phase is high-level marketing. So, we are, just got the budget drafted and that will be presented next week, but probably spending upwards of $40,000 in this next phase on building a new website, getting SEO and Google AdWords purchasing and learning how to train people to then do that for us. We also will be having a blog written, blog posts that will be especially attractive. We've got someone who's been studying the field of economic development and site selection criteria that's going to be able to put highly-targeted information out there. So, we're going to start to track to see if we can create more traction and more visits to that website so that our retention and expansion and our calls out for more trained technology workers or a machinist will all get more traction. So, that was part of the three-year plan and so, we are moving into that at this point.
So, again, moving on, the promotional assistance, one thing that many of you probably saw was D3 Glass, one of the companies we've been working with on expanding their, their business. They were recently recognized by Inc. Magazine as one of the 5,000 fastest-growing companies in their category. So, very impressive for a company that just started, just D3 Glass for, although they have a sister company that's been in my shower door, but they went into glass manufacturing about three or four years ago and they're just had tremendous success and Christine's been working on workforce development with that company. So, that's one example there that we've been, we've been doing. Use permit activity from the city of, the square footage, if we go, go look at 2015, there's been 87 permits issued in the city, 260,000-plus square feet and 456 employees just this fiscal year, 2015, that those companies have generated. Here's another interesting cumulative impact fee savings. If you look down, this is 2010 through 2014, but you'll see a lot of conversion, medical office type, those, those types of businesses are, impact fees are very high for those types of businesses and we've been the beneficiary of new medical offices moving into Benita Springs and Estero. It's been a big incentive for these types of companies and they're typically high-paying jobs with really good benefits. So, those are great types of companies that we, you know, that the impact fees have really benefited those, you know, attracting those companies. Total vacant commercial space, you can see since 2010, that, that graph says it all. It's coming way down and just the new, you know, new activity has actually been slowing down the average over the five-year period, but you can see that where we started from back in 2010, that space is being absorbed fairly quickly. Yes, all right. So, that's, you know, I've been a member of the partnership since the beginning and would like to thank the city of Benita Springs for their commitment, especially Arlene and Carl, who've been to every meeting and supported us. They've been great resource partners. They meet with clients and help people work through the process every day. We ask the city to continue to support our organization so that we continue to make, make a difference in the community and make this a great place to live and work.
Thank you very much. Good deal.
So, we just had one more thing. We wanted to invite up Doug Tredwell of Specialty Coatings, one of our latest clients that you all have had the opportunity to talk about and to support with all kinds of things. So, Doug.
Mayor, council. Doug Tredwell, Special Coatings. Actually, special, not specialty, but that's okay. I just wanted to come in and say really thank you for the warm welcome to Benita Springs and Lee County. Arlene and the rest of your, of your group here have really been tremendous. And the thing that I was most impressed with, we were actually looking around the country. We have a facility in Germany, China, South Korea, and now the U.S. And we were looking throughout the U.S. in terms of where to locate this. And one of the things that was really most impressive through this entire process was that whatever, whatever your people told us they were going to do, they did. There was no question. There was no hesitation. We actually got our permit turned around in less than 24 hours, which was fantastic to get everything up and running. So, again, thank you very much. We really look forward to continuing our relationship here.
It's our pleasure. You guys do fantastic stuff. I can't wait to see how you grow. Thanks.
Do you have questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions? Good. And I guess you're going to have, your annual meeting is coming up and that's going to be at Global Tech, right?
October 6th and you're going to hear that night from Camuto Group's going to have a slide presentation and Gary Mart at Global Tech has continued to grow and expand and we've been working on workforce for him as well. So, I think you'll be excited if you can all attend.
I got to tell you, the people in Benita Springs, if you, if you knew that the companies that were here in Benita Springs, it's remarkable. It's just remarkable. So, thank you very much for all your hard work. Thanks much. Thank you. Okay. And we are to the consent agenda and we have a whopper of a consent agenda. There is one item. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And there's a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slack.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Longcard.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay. And we are to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on any city item, please come forward.
Very short agenda today. Again, Kathy McGrath, I have to remind you, Second Annual Film Fest, this is September 2nd. The deadline, October 4th and the gala is November 5th. Remember, big cash prizes, dough entry fee, the Imperial River, come on, guys, enter and come see the gala up at the Prado November 5th. And one other thing I'd like to mention, being on the waterways advisory committee and all, I didn't want any misunderstandings here about money. You know, there are a lot of grants that WCIND has, a lot of applications, they're different. And Marine Patrol is just one of them. And the money that's dedicated to that cannot be diverted to something else. There is environmental education. I know off the top of my head, we donate to or we give grants to like the Imaginarium, Manatee Park, Eve Haverfield with Turtle Time. And as far as dredging, if you want to go way back, in the early 90s, you couldn't get through Intrepid Waters. The dredging money was there, but you couldn't pay the feasibility study. So, the Imperial of Conservancy went together with the county. We raised the money. Took seven years, seven years. We helped pay for the feasibility study. The dredging was done. Now, those who've been around here a long time will remember Chuck Listowski. Chuck was director of Parks and Rec. Then he went to Natural Resources and up to WCIND. He just retired. Meanwhile, we had this wonderful young man, Justin McBride. And I want to tell you what Justin did. He, you know, there were problems, not only Intrepid Waters, but Broadway Hoag, if any of your boat, that needed dredging. And he worked for a long, long time and he was able, with DEP, to get kind of a maintenance dredging program where each time it needed dredging, it just could be maintenance dredged. They didn't have to go for the full-blown program and that was very, very important. And the county gets a big chunk of WCIND money. There's derelict removal, there's artificial reefs, and of course, the dredging projects. So, they keep an eye on what needs to be dredged. So, I suggest if, if there's anyone out there in any of the waterways that feels there's a problem area, please contact Natural Resources Management up in Lee County. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city item, please come forward.
Greg DeWitt, District 2 and Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. Probably still in, Councilman Slack is thunder, but I just want to remind everybody, September 11th, 6 o'clock at the Lyles Hotel for the, for the celebration or the dedication, the rededication of the artifact there. So, please come out, support us. We'll be there with our fire truck and the flag and for those fallen firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Rick Steinmeier. I've been reviewing the budget and I see you guys have been awful busy since I've been taking care of my mother for the last two years. And it's amazing how much is getting done in this city. And I think you're right on the money. September 10th is the judge, is the budget hearing and I hope everybody comes to it and appreciates the hard work you guys have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Won't take up any more of your time. Just want to say thank you for the consideration for the Wiesing Grant. Kathy and Arlene do a great job setting it all up, so, and again, if you need anything, you guys know where I'm at.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please come forward.
The, just wanted to plant a thought at a, I think it was First Budget Workshop. Our city manager did state that our economic situation in the budget is much different than the past. We're in the big project of Old 41 redo of that and that's a great project, but you're really not going to know its cost to what's done. And it's, and it's, once you've launched it, it's going to cost what it's going to cost to get it done, even though I know you'll try and keep the costs in line. It's still going to, could cost more than you want and it could also, you want to make sure you get the overhead power lines and all that buried. Having said that, I would urge city council to step back and say, you know what, we've got a lot of things we're proposing to do in the next fiscal year. Why don't we just take time out and do a little planning and studying on all different types of things and then see where you're at next year because once money is spent, unless you can do like the federal government and print it, it's gone, you know? So, and, and I think every one of you will say that you're fiscally conservative. Kind of reminds me of an MPO meeting.
No, I'm a flaming liberal.
Oh, you are?
You know that.
Oh, no. Oh, you're fiscally conservative.
Go ahead, carry on.
Anyway, so that's, that's my recommendation and it's, I really think this, a year of stepping back and planning and prioritizing would be a good thing to do and you'll know more where you are on the Old 41 project at that point. And I'm sure a lot of other good things would show up to be looked at in that upcoming year after this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and carry on to the city attorney's report. You've got a big one there, over there.
Nothing today, sir.
Well, hey, welcome home, too.
Thank you.
Made quite a trip there. Hello, Carl.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This evening, we've got the review of the monthly financial reports. We submit those. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Hands in the back.
You want?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. And the only other thing is something that Mr. Steinmeier already mentioned. Remember that our first public hearing on our proposed budget for 1516 is going to be held on September 10th here in these chambers at 5:01 PM. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And we are to mayor and councilman writers' reports and let's just go ahead and start with Bill. Bill, what do you have for us tonight? You have anything for us?
I think this will be a record. I don't have anything to say, but, but I think maybe we could get, let the people go home and enjoy their families by stopping talking, so I'm not going to talk anymore.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. And Dr. Steve, what do you have for us?
Happy anniversary, Connie.
Aw, it's his anniversary!
Happy anniversary!
Anniversary. Well, we should stay longer then. I'm just kidding. Pete, what do you have for him?
Yeah, no, happy anniversary, Dr. Steve and Connie. And just real quickly, interestingly enough, although my son and his best friend were here today, they, that was their idea completely and I know it wasn't on the agenda, so thanks for letting them speak and I'll just recommend that they get in touch and I think there's been some good points here. I think our budget's in pretty good shape, but I look forward to the discussion on September 10th with some items that I think need to be looked at. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Janet.
Thank you. Very excited to read that our dog park is getting state recognition from the Florida Parks and Recreation Association Showcase Magazine. That's a mouthful, but it's pretty awesome. Congratulations to staff. You've, I say it all the time, we've got the best dog park going, so it's awesome. For everyone's calendars, the coastal cleanup is the morning of Saturday, September 19th and that's out in the lawn in front of Lover's Key, so I hope to see everybody there. And also, to put on your calendars, Saturday, October 24th is Riverfest and as you know, that's our city's fall celebration. And then, the Everglades Wonder Gardens has a new project this year and that's called Ghosts in the Garden. So, for two weeks before Halloween, we're having nonprofits and organizations and businesses, we're inviting them to create a six-foot maximum-sized ghost, freestanding ghost, and we're going to put them in the park, all over the park, all over the gardens and then we'll have our visitors vote on their favorite ghost and then that ghost wins a trophy. So, for more information, you can contact the Wonder Gardens on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Stephen, what do you got first?
Greg mentioned it, he, about 9/11 and then looking forward to it at 6:00 PM on Friday.
All right. Thank you very much. And let's see, I think that's about it. Anyone like to approve the minutes?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Motion approved and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Longcard.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slack.
Aye.
Okay. And as per the agenda, one more shot at public comment. Anybody else got anything else left to say? This is last chance. Come on up.
My name's Jim Corimbe. I live in the Pelican Landing community. My wife is back there saying, "Let them go to dinner." So, she disapproves of this, but I want to be very brief. Amy and I have been coming to some of these meetings of late and I want to compliment the, the council and quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, you in particular, for the way these meetings are run. I served back in the 60s in a local governing board and we never was, were able to achieve, I think, the, the mood of cordiality and transparency that seems to exist here. So, I, I will come back and hopefully get out of the doghouse with my wife and we'll go to dinner as well. But I do want to compliment you and thank you for the way you run these meetings. I think it's terrific.
Thank you so much and I'm proud to have you in town here. Thank you so much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
That was very nice.
Anyone? Hey, everybody, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening.
Great. This is a record, isn't it?
Yeah. That was a script.
What do we, if we can take these budgets?